His wife and like.
You guys ready?
Yes, sir.
You're drinking?
Yeah.
Water?
Good to go, man. Hydrated.
Hey, you guys ready?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Want to go ahead and start our meeting? Welcome, everybody, to Monday, March 21st. We'll begin with the call to order and the invocation of the pledge by Councilwoman Bruce Bowers.
Let us pray silently together, each one of us, according to our individual beliefs. Let us offer thanks for our blessings and for one another. Let us be a source of hope for those in need and contentment for those who are lonely. Let us give gratitude for our opportunity to serve the city of Gehanna.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Item B, additions or correction. I'm sorry. Roll call.
Angelou.
Here.
Bowers.
Here.
McGregor.
Here.
Padova.
Here.
Renner.
Here.
Schnitzer.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Thank you. All right, now, item B, additions or corrections to our agenda.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to move Resolution 009-2022 off of the consent agenda, and I believe it would go now in between items G and H, which would have to be renumerated.
Okay. Resolution 0009-2022 will be after. Item G, ordinances for introduction waiver. It'll be its new heading, Resolutions and Motion Resolutions. Any other additions or corrections? Okay. Item C, hearing of visitors. Do we have any speaker slips?
I did not receive any.
Thank you, and I should actually take a moment to introduce you to everybody. Tonight, we have our, it's our official first night of our new clerk, Jeremy Van Meter.
Thank you, President Renner.
And you're flying solo tonight without Pam, so.
Good luck. Thank you.
We really mean that.
All right. Well, thank you. All right. Item D, presentations. We have a presentation from the CIC.
Evening, everybody. Give me one moment to load up my computer, and I'll put up on the screen. Perfect, thank you. So everybody should all see my presentation. I don't know if it's on your tablets as well, if it's live streaming. Perfect, thank you. So, good evening. As everyone knows, I serve as Director of Economic Development, but they may also not know that I serve on the Board of Directors for the CIC. And with me this evening, I have two members of the board as well. George Moros, our Board Secretary and Vice President, as well as Betty Collins, our President. So they're here to answer some questions, if you so choose, as well. A little bit of highlights of what you're going to see this evening. The background, a little bit about the CIC, what it is, what it does, what its mission is here in the city of Gehanna. The leadership itself, our end-of-the-year finances for 2021, and then some of our successes in 2021. Again, a little bit of background. I'm not going to read everything on the screen, but you can kind of get a gist as to what we do from a CIC perspective. Some of the bigger highlights is managing the closure and operation thereof of the Bedford landfill, otherwise known as Central Park, our WOW contracts with the fiber agreement. We have certain non-exclusivity clauses with WOW as relates to some of our fiber optic engagements with GehannaNet, for those who are familiar with GehannaNet services here in the city. They help us with some of our attraction programming, so we help refer them from a lead standpoint. You'll see some of that in the finances of the organization. And then I work directly with the Board of Directors through my office to help do some marketing, specifically around Central Parkway, OCT zoning, Creekside area, things of that nature. There's some other nuance they work with promoting the city. They are our land bank agent from an MOU that was done back in 2013, I believe it says on the slide. Yep, July 1st of 2013. One of the things we'll highlight in the presentation a little later was the CIC was instrumental in helping us do some dollars into the economic development event that was held last May to kind of highlight some of the early successes and what was happening in the development space here in the city of Gehanna. Leadership. As I noted, Betty and George were able to join us this evening. Betty's a CPA. George is very well-known. I'm not going to list the number of hats that he wears in Gehanna as well. Is that fair, my friend? Jeff Kessler is our Treasurer, Senior Vice President for Heartland Bank, so we have a lot of great skill sets and the senior leadership side of it. But then Kelly Fox is a local attorney here in town. John Hicks is also a CPA and our Planning Commission liaison on the board. Marco Capellino is with Kemba Finance, the credit union here headquartered right here. He helps us with marketing activities. And then you see the city trustees, the mayor, of course, Director of Planning, Michael Blackford, Councilman Renner, Councilman Weaver are on the board. Previously, that was held by a council, former council member Larick and former council member Leesberg, and then myself, serving in those various capacities from a city's perspective. Essentially, you have a strong depth of community representation, but then you also have a high level of knowledge and expertise in certain areas that help operate the CIC effectively and efficiently. Our finances. This was broken down. I can provide the board with our, we are finalizing the 2021 end-of-year finances tomorrow morning, so I can send that to you once it's out of draft form, if you'd like to see that end-of-year finances. But this was the basic breakdown of what you see. Our revenues from GehannaNet, some rental income from properties that we currently rent out in the city, they're single-family homes, as well as some, the Kumon Building, which is that 110 North High property referenced. Maybe you have some rental income generator from that operationally. And then the biggest number we see in there is that sale of the 700 Science Boulevard property. So that was a property that was associated with the ADB project late last year that came through the CIC. And then you see our expenses, real estate insurance, depreciation, things of that nature. What you really see here is that there were substantial net proceeds last year to the CIC that we hope to be deploying this year as part of a strategic land banking activity throughout the city to help enable cluster development and revitalization in some of our key corridor areas, which we can talk about a little later. The mayor and I talked about this earlier today in the board chair with me last week, that we didn't have a formal presentation, and given that there are some fresh faces on this committee, on this board as well for council, I thought it might be helpful to look back into 2020 rather than just 2021 to talk about some of the recent successes. So one of the biggest things we had to do back in 2020 was build the foundation. This isn't showing up really well on the screen, so I apologize. I can send the presentation to you if you can't read that. But we had to shrink the board down a little bit, only to be in compliance with Ohio Revised Code, so you're seeing some adjustments still happening. Sorry, I've got a timer on this, and apparently I'm talking too slow. And then it was about really strategy, about where we needed to go operationally within the board, and so we should be targeting from a property acquisition standpoint, which led us to this, which was part of our business engagement in 2020. There were some small business programming that happened through the CIC. Eight businesses received about $20,000 of funding that flowed, I believe, through the city CARES Act dollars into the CIC, and really targeted some of the larger industries that were directly impacted in the early stages of the pandemic. Folks in real estate property management. iTickets was a distribution platform for concerts and things that just basically shut down, bars, restaurants, small businesses. Some of these are minority-owned businesses, some of them are women-owned businesses, some of them are veteran-owned businesses, so they were really able to strategically place some of those dollars in those key sub-demographics within these industries, all located here in the city of Gehanna. Moving forward in the successes of 2021, as I mentioned earlier, the cosponsorship of the economic development event back in May, we had Kenny McDonald as the keynote speaker. Mayor Jawin spoke a lot about her vision of what was happening in, for the city of Gehanna and how we were going to move this forward, and then that was actually my introduction to both the city as well as the economic development field here locally. And it was over at the peak, so I know a few members of the council were there that evening. CIC helped sponsor the food and some of the beverages that were partaken in that evening. Obviously, ADB Safegate. Now, this one, I wanted to take a little bit of time to talk about a little bit, because under Ohio Revised Code, I think it was Councilwoman McGregor brought this up previously about why the CIC was involved, what that looked like operationally, so I wanted to bring this forward. Under Ohio Revised Code, CICs are able to be utilized as a conduit for property conveyance. When we were working through the process, I believe with Mill Street, the question came about, about the conveyance of land, public lands, auction, things of that nature, that we found to be actually a moot point, because of, once the vacation occurred, the land was split. But that conversation still came about as part of that process. Why does that matter here? Well, if it was city surplus land, the city wanted to dispose of it directly, the city would have to go through a public bid and public auction process. If it conveys to the CIC, which the city is permitted to do under Ohio Revised Code, you're able to, the CIC can then be more strategic about who they would sell that land to. In this instance, we had a business entity, ADB Safegate, who wanted to purchase city property for their new North American Headquarters facility. The city could not necessarily directly engage that business, they had to go through a public process, but the CIC did not necessarily have to do that. So the CIC had the ability to convey it directly, and because we were a related entity, the city could convey that property to the CIC first, and then the CIC could then transmit, transfer to the proposed business property in this instance. That was the CIC's role in this. Those net proceeds, as you saw earlier, about $790,000 some odd thousand dollars are now being reinvested in the city in part of a larger land banking and cluster development strategy that the CIC is looking to engage, and we could talk a little bit more about. I know Councilman Renner and Councilman Weaver have been very involved in some of those conversations at the CIC level. And as I mentioned, this, for 2022, this is land banking. So what we're doing today, and actually meeting tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m., is to review some of our activities around that land banking strategy, properties that we have identified in key corridors of the city for economic revitalization purposes in hopes of procuring those properties for opportunity. One of the things that I really like about the way this is structured from a CIC standpoint, it allows for a blended public and private review of the properties, the strategy, the opportunity. But also, I want to borrow an expression that my old, one of my old colleagues used to say all the time is, it allows us to put a thumb on the scale a little bit as a city. It allows us to kind of assert what we want to see in development and where we want to see it. Whereas if we let the private market just have full reign over some of these things, it would limit how we are able to do it beyond just zoning criteria. It allows us to have a much more engaged discussion with developers through the CIC avenue. At least, that's my goal in this capacity. So I wanted to give those highlights for you, both looking back into 2020 as well as 2021, and then talking about, a little bit about what we're doing now operationally. And again, we're meeting tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m., right, actually, right here in council chambers. I don't know who has a committee meeting at 8:00 a.m. next door to us, but hey, I'll be sitting right here. I'll be here for the next 14 to 17 hours, right in this chair, I guess, and available for any questions you might have. Also, as I mentioned, George and Betty are here as well, if you have any questions about the history or anything that I may not have a direct reference point to.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Just a quick question.
Yes, Ms. Bowers. Who? That's not what Becky said. Yes, ma'am.
Just a quick question about the micro grants that were referenced, the $20,000 in grant funding. Was that CARES Act dollars that the CIC received, or was it?
I believe those were CARES Act dollars that flowed from the city to the CIC, and then the CIC then distributed them before the guidance was provided that allowed the city to make direct investments.
Got it.
Sort of. That was before your time. Actually, what, the CIC had started a grant program. When COVID, COVID, with the onset of COVID, the CIC board met, and we wanted to find a way to try to support the small business community. CIC used its own dollars to set up a grant program. As that was getting underway, and as we were about to launch that program through CIC, we discovered, we learned we were going to get CARES dollars. So that allowed us then to expand that program at a much larger level, and in fact, we ended up, I think, giving back $850,000-plus dollars into the community, both to residents and to businesses. But CIC had already launched their grant program, which is where they gave the $20,000. We then reimbursed them back through CARES Act dollars, because it was essentially the same purpose.
Thanks for that clarification.
You weren't here.
That's fine.
Any other comments or questions?
I'm still learning.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Like, as I mentioned earlier, once we vote on the final year-end financials, I'm more than happy to send those along to the board as well, so you guys can see the balance sheet from last year.
Please.
Thank you.
And can you make sure that the clerk has the copy of these slides?
Yes, I'll have that sent to Jeremy as I sit back.
Thank you. Okay. Please. Can you come to the microphone so that, yeah, thank you. We want everybody at home who's watching can actually hear you.
Fortunately, we have a bunch of theater students here.
Okay, so can you?
Rejects from the diet grams.
So you can hear me now. So we also want to have where council is, full council is at our meetings twice a year. So in June, we'll have, we'll do a full presentation of all the finances, our auditor, we have a compilation done every year, and it goes through a state audit. So we will have that presentation at that time in June, and then we want to have you also back in November before the year closes. So I just wanted to make sure that that was known to everybody, so.
Is that on a specific, do you know what the date of that meeting, or was it?
I don't, but Nate will tell you tomorrow. Yeah. They will let you know. I mean, we always meet on the third Tuesday of the month, so there'll be, there'll be that time, and they're always at 8:00 a.m.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That would be June 21st would be the first meeting in that cluster.
Thank you so much. All right. Item E, consent agenda. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Have a first by Ms. Bowers.
Second.
A second by Mr. Weaver. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Angelou?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F, ordinances for introduction?
Schnitzer.
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Okay. Item F, ordinances for introduction and first reading. Just reading this for the record. Ordinance 0013-2022 and ordinance authorizing supplemental appropriation for a splash pad. Item G, ordinances for introduction, waiver, and adoption. Ordinance 0014-2022, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation, workers' compensation self-insurance program, waive second reading. Do you have a motion to adopt said ordinance?
Which ordinance? 14?
Yes.
14.
14. We didn't do 13, though. Did we?
Yeah, I read it into the record.
Oh, it's just first reading. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I was reading into the record.
Forget it. Sorry.
Mr. President, I'll move to adopt ORD 14.
Have a first.
With waiver.
I have a first by Ms. Bowers.
A second.
A second by Ms. Padova. Roll call. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Bowers?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Angelou?
Yes.
Item, ordinance passes. Thank you. The next one, we have our new item H, Resolutions and Motion Resolutions, Resolution 0009-2022 for our resolution recognizing and honoring theater in our schools month. Ms. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank Cindy Maciosi, GLHS Drama Director and teacher for, and my former teacher and former director for being here, as well as some of her students and parents and guardians, so thank you so much for coming down. This, I mentioned this at committee, but the past two years have been exceedingly difficult for everyone, but especially so on our theater and arts communities. And the, to see the happen, I'm also married to a high school theater teacher, and so I've seen firsthand the lengths of creativity that teachers have had to go to, go through to adapt over the past couple of years, and especially in our theater programs. It's tough to get folks to project, for example, with a mask on your face, but we did what we need to do to get by. And so I won't necessarily read the whole resolution, but I did want to present a little bit of data here. According to the American Alliance for Theater Education, students involved in drama performance scored an average of 65.5 points higher on the verbal component and 35.5 points higher on the math component of the SAT. And it just goes to show that involvement in the arts and involvement in theater programs makes you, you can, you can take that into any endeavor in life. Makes you a better, more well-rounded individual. I, my colleague, Ms. Angelou, has a background in music, was a music teacher. I have an undergraduate degree in musical theater. I'm now an attorney by trade. But I rely on my theater background every day, and so if there's one thing I would say to the students who are here, no matter what you do in life, your theater background you'll take with you, and I urge you to continue to pursue the arts throughout the rest of your life. But I, like I said, I don't feel the need to necessarily read every bit of the resolution, but wanted to thank our guests again for coming down and resolve that the city of Gehanna recognizes March as theater in our schools month.
Thank you. I'd just like to add that Mr. Weaver represented you very well, because he taught us all the difference between the way theater is spelled in our title and the other way, so we got to learn something. All right, so I do have a motion to adopt Resolution 009-2022. Yes?
As a trial attorney, I like to say that all trial attorneys are just frustrated actors.
We're going to remember that.
Nice. So do, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Have a first by Ms. Angelou?
Second.
A second by Ms. Padova. Any discussion? Further discussion?
I'd like to say that the teacher there, the one that's doing a lot of this stuff, you give her a, those. you give her a, those. She's the best. She's, she's a wonderful, she's just the best. The best.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Angelo?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
All right. Resolution passes and adopted.
Come on down. We'll do a presentation.
Okay. Yeah. Good point.
I'm sorry. He told me I could say a few words, so.
Awesome. Please.
I just want to thank the council, obviously, my former student, Trenton Weaver, for buying into all of this that we do daily. Our season, if you will, starts in September and ends in May. We are now, and I will put a shameless plug in for Legally Blonde, which will happen, which will happen in May, May 5 through 8. We would love to have the support, and we'd love to have council there. Please, call me. You know somebody. We can get you in. But I do think it's important to realize that the arts are not a luxury. They are a necessity in our schools. They're the reason that some kids come to school and some kids succeed. And I just want to make sure that everybody in Gehanna is aware of the support that we get from council and we get from our school boards because it is something to value. And I think this is proof positive that we have something good here, and we want to keep it. So, thank you.
Very nice. Especially after yesterday being the first day of spring, this was nice. Item, well, the new item I, correspondence and actions. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, I don't have anything official to report tonight.
Thank you, sir. Council colleagues?
I have one, I have one item. Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to just bring everyone's attention to an item from Ohio Municipal League, House Bill 563. I had forwarded this on to the administration and Attorney Malarsky because I think it would have an impact on communities like Gehanna. House Bill 563 would preempt municipalities from regulating or prohibiting the use of short-term rental properties. This is quoted from OML. This legislation is a clear violation of home rule authority and prohibits municipalities from creating necessary regulations that protect the safety and best interests of their residents in each individual community. OML links you to Legislative Service Commission analysis for HB 563 and encourages, OML encourages member communities to engage and participate if they have concerns on how HB 563 would impact our community. So I would encourage all of us to stay attuned to what, what happens with that bill.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. Item J, the new J, Representatives, Community Improvement Corporation. The only thing, we don't have anything new to report, but I'm a little confused what we heard earlier about where the meeting is. I know it's tomorrow at 8 o'clock, but we either be next door or we'll be here.
Look for the donuts.
Look for the donuts. So there's donuts. Nice.
Salt.
Okay. Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, Ms. Angelo?
Thank you. The commission met on, let me see what date it was at, March 10th. And we had a great, insightful lunch forum before the commission met with the Ohio Department of Development Director, Lydia Mahalik. We welcomed the City of Mount Vernon and Jackson Township in Franklin County as the newest MORPC members. That takes us to 78 MORPC members meeting together to collaborate every month. And indeed, we're expecting that to be 80 in April. We were looking forward at that time to the Wednesday of State of the Region, but we'll get back to that later. I'll let you know the keynote speaker was Andy Burke, and he was amazing. And the special rep, he was a special representative for broadband at the National Telecommunications and Information Administration. So he had many, many wonderful things to, to say. This is, you can see that on YouTube if you want to. It's only a two-hour thing, but, no, it was not quite a two hours, but it was, it's very worthwhile seeing because he has some wonderful things to say. We had three action minds taking action on the state capital budget. The state capital budget process is proceeding at the State House. Please make sure, you know, we, they, we ask them to have projects submitted to the state representative senator as soon as possible. Prepare for grant opportunities. The MPO members seeking MORPC attributable funding this year, or Ohio Public Works Commission funding, should start thinking about projects and reach out to MORPC for help. Federal funding opportunities from the bipartisan infrastructure law may occupy much of our time later in the year. Federal raise grants are due on April 14th. And register for the Smart Cities Connect Conference. This one is coming up from April 4th to 7th, and it's right here in Columbus, Ohio. And the local governments, we register for nothing. You get to go for a wonderful expo as well as a conference, and it will cost you nothing. The March Board meeting highlights were MORPC Board Secretary Chris Amaro's grooms, who chairs the nominating committee, that's by our, our things that we do, reported on the committee's nominations. The nominations include Eric Janus for Franklin County as MORPC Chair, Chris Amaro's grooms, Dublin as MORPC Vice Chair, Michelle Crandall from Hilliard as MORPC Secretary. And the nominations to our executive committee include the renewed terms of myself, Karen Angelo, Michelle Crandall, Franklin Christman from Asheville, Chris Amaro's grooms as from Dublin, Greg Lastini from Franklin County, David Scheffler Lancaster, Kim Maggert, City of Whitehall, Rory McGuinness Columbus, and Joe Stefanoff New Albany. The election occurs at our April commission. I get to do that, that election, and then I move to as the past chair. MORPC is a resource for navigating the impacts and opportunities in the recent announced Intel project. At the commission meeting, we reviewed the project and feedback from our recent listening session. Always feel free to reach to any one of us at MORPC to be able to get what you need to know. Regarding bipartisan infrastructure law, we are even more ready with our new grants and infrastructure officer, Abby Barnes, starting at MORPC. She is there. She was there at the State of the Region, and she, she comes from, actually, Ohio State. She, and she's now at the person doing all the grants. So if you want to know her, it's Abby Barnes. The regional data, this is some committee updates. Regional Data Advisory Committee, the ARDAC report divided, provided an outstanding of the group's structure, including group, working groups, GIS and data using groups staffed by MORPC. The Regional Policy Roundtable, I could let you do that. Oh, maybe you. Oh, no. Okay. The roundtable was a new vice chair, Columbus City Council Member Lords Barrosa de Padilla. Padilla. Okay. Thank you. It's that theater that does that, you know, that gets you, gets you right to the stuff. The legislative updates highlighted in the state capital budget had a distracted driving bill at the State House. Distracted driving. It has also recovered our region's defense work and the federal omnibus spending package working its way through Congress. The package includes funding for bipartisan infrastructure law. You know, it's really interesting, the defense group, we have two defense groups here. One is down, I can't think of that, what is that? But there's one right next to us that if anything should happen there, we would be the first to be hurt in that. So this is really important for our, for our community, and we are like on the bottom edge of that. So this is something that's very important to us. Sustainability Advisory Committee, that's, I think, with you now, Mayor. The update highlighted the recently released air quality end-of-season report, including the fact that we had no unhealthy air quality days last year at all. It was the first time ever, I think. So that is really terrific, and it's probably got a lot to do with people working at home and not driving their cars. So who knows? We will see. We also congratulate the City of Upper Arlington for receiving the first Gold Soul Smart designation in Ohio. Meanwhile, progress is being made on the Central Ohio Greenways Trail Town Framework, and I'm sure we're going to have a whole lot to do with that. Metropolitan Planning Organization, there is a deadline at the end of the month for those in Franklin County Transportation Improvement District, which is staffed by MORPC. Other counties can form a transportation improvement district, which makes more funding available. MORPC recently awarded Columbus, Dublin, Sunbury, and Franklin County metro parks with technical assistance, all for services related to the Central Ohio Greenways vision. Meanwhile, the next step of Rapid, say which side of the map, TUM is moving forward. We have the books here. I think, Mayor, you brought in a few books. I'll try to remember mine the next time. Really amazing books to see on this, what this is going to potentially be in, in the future. We recently met with Amtrak officials to further position our region for passenger rail service. We also held our first inter-regional connections committee meeting, which is tasking with planning and developing regional mobility initiatives that promote mode choice options between Central Ohio and other regions in, in the Midwest. There were a couple upcoming events. The one Mid-Ohio Finance Administrators, which is, was on March 21st. They do such a great job of, of going through all the things that are, are going on. And let's see, we, let's skip those. Ty Marsh also is retiring from the Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio, SWCO. I think it's at the, not quite at the end of the year, or maybe a couple of months from now, after more than eight years as the executive director. So with that, we would see somebody, people at the State of the Region, and I have just a few things to say about the State of the Region, which was a wonderful surprise to me at many of the things that happened. And we, I thank all the people that came from, from the City of Gehanna to be at the State of the Region. We had 800 people there, and, and it was just wonderful to have people from Gehanna there. MORPC welcomed the keynote speaker, Andy Burke. I told you that earlier. During his keynotes, Burke spoke about his role at the National Telecommunications and Information Administration, where he works, to help states and territories connect, prepare, and take advantage of an influx of $48 billion in new federal funds from the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act to make more broadband, more accessible, affordable to undeserved communities. And again, you can see this on, on YouTube if you would like to get more information. He, he is actually from Tennessee, and he has a great, a nice little accent from that Tennessee. He's, he was really a very, very good speaker that gave us a lot of information. At the events, there were special honors were presented by three recipients as MORPC bestowed the William C. Haybuck Collaboration Achievement Award, the William H. Anderson Excellence in Public Service Award, and the Regional Leadership Award. The William C. Haybick Award honors individuals or organizations that have achieved an effective and effort or innovative collaborative project in Central Ohio. And this year's award was presented to downtown Belle Fountain redevelopment and Small Nation, and it is absolutely spectacular what they are doing there. We also heard them at the CVB when we had their luncheon, and it was a joy to see the joy that they get from doing what they're doing for Belle Fountain. And let's go down to, that's got a pretty long one there. The William H. Anderson Excellence in Public Service Award, which I hold dear to my heart, recognizes a MORPC board member who exemplifies outstanding leadership. This year, the award was presented to Joe Stefanoff, City Manager for the City of New Albany, Ohio, and a Gehanna resident. So we are very happy to have Joe actually working as the New Albany, in New Albany, but being, living in here, where we love him very much. The Regional Leadership Award honors extraordinary efforts to ensure the future viability of regions' communication. The award was represented to Jennifer Gallagher, Director of the City of Columbus Department of Public Service. And she is certainly needs, she is amazing person. And we also then represented Mayor Maggert and, and for giving, because we didn't have for two years, we did not have the State of the Region, and we did a virtual one last year, and she won one of the awards, and she, she gave one of the awards. And Trudy, 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 Trudy. Where is Trudy's name? Also, a person that came and gave, I'm trying to think of her name. You know her name. Do you know her name? Trudy, Trudy Bartley. I can't, couldn't come down to it. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you very much for that. Trudy Bartley. She, she also gave one, she received one last year, but then she gave one of the other ones. So it was a wonderful, wonderful time there, and I am, I'm honored to be part of this wonderful organization that is only growing bigger and better with everything that works. That's all I have.
Thank you. I'm a subscriber of Columbus Business First, and last week, I won the issues. There was a full-page insert, actually, it was a section, several pages, and it was an ad for MORPC. And I look it down, and there were two pictures. One was William Murdock.
And one was me.
Karen Angelo. I was like, hey, I know that lady.
I get to sign all those things. You know, when you're, when you're the chair, you get to also sign millions of dollars of things that you're saying it's okay to do.
Right.
It's, it can get very.
It was really nice to see.
Yeah. Thank you. I'm glad you enjoyed the letter.
Yeah. All right. MORPC Regional Policy Roundtable. Mr. Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. President. Also had the privilege of attending the State of the Region for MORPC State of the Region last week, along with some of my council colleagues, the council office, and members of the city administration. I think my colleague left out one very important thing in that she was recognized for her contributions to MORPC and her decades of service to the City of Gehanna as well.
I can read it for you. I, I appreciate that very, very much. I did not know that was going to happen. And I, I was so, I've been so like emotional since that time that I can't even get my thank you notes for people that came because it was such a, a great honor and I'm, an unexpected honor, as, you know, we have unexpected things happen all the time. So this was one of those unexpected things, and I, I can only thank my friends at MORPC who are terrific people as well as, you know, brilliant. Thank you for bringing that up.
From a, a high-level overview, what I took away from the State of the Region in my brief time involved with MORPC so far, there's a lot of very creative things happening in communities across the region. Belle Fountain, just one of them. And we would do well as a city to look to our neighbors and look to communities in the region and see what they're doing, and see if there's anything that we can harness here in. here in Gehanna. The creation of this role for grants, for an infrastructure within MORPC is huge. And, because those dollars will be going somewhere, and Gehanna should have its fair share. So I look forward to continuing to serve on the Policy Roundtable and getting more involved with MORPC and learning from our fellow communities in Franklin County and beyond. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Convention and Visitors Bureau, Ms. Padova.
Thank you. Visit Gehanna held their annual meeting on March 11th. The new board members were sworn in and awards were presented. A copy of the annual report can be found on Visit Gehanna's website. And don't forget to mark your calendar for Herb Day on May 7th. The Ohio Herb Center members will be able to preorder plants, and a limited number of early access passes to the plant sale will be sold beginning April 1st. There are also still a few spots left in the Pressed Flower Art Class on this Saturday at noon. That's all for me.
Thank you. School Board, Ms. Bowers.
Yes. School Board had its regular meeting last Thursday. At that meeting, Superintendent Steve Barrett announced that he will be retiring effective July 31st of this year. Mr. Barrett has been in education for 34 years. He's been here in Gehanna approximately six years, and he announced that he has had, it has been his great privilege to work with incredible teachers, administrators, and support staff. The board will be holding a special meeting this Wednesday, starting at 6:30, to interview executive search firms. I know Board President Piccolantonio has been fielding some questions about why they're engaging executive search firms rather than doing that internally. She indicated that it's best practices, and that they just don't have the staff and the resources, with it being a smaller administrative team. So they will be, I think, streaming those types of those meetings on YouTube unless they go into executive session, as is their policy. I think, I have, and just as, on a side note, I have a meeting with Finance Chair Daphne Maring tomorrow afternoon, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. New Item K, Official Reports. Madam Mayor.
Yes, thank you very much. Since the topic of the day seems to be MORPC, I'll start there as well. It was a pleasure to attend State of the Region last week. As Councilwoman Angela mentioned, I know council had a table, we, the mayor's office also had a table. It was a, we had several members of our leadership team and staff that were there as well. Several of them are very involved in MORPC committees, so it was a great opportunity for them to be there to hear the guest speaker as well. Projects like infrastructure, broadband access, transportation, housing are all issues that we are confronting on a daily basis here. It's going to continue to become a hot topic of conversation, particularly as we try to determine what the intel impact is going to be on not only Gehanna, but on all of the surrounding communities in the Central Ohio area. MORPC is, is one of the best things I enjoy most about MORPC is the collaboration amongst all of the communities, the cities, townships, villages. We learn from each other, we share ideas. You always walk away from, from a meeting or a gathering thinking, yeah, we need to do that, or having somebody else call you and say, hey, how did you do that? It's one of the things I'm most looking forward to, as we continue the Sustainability Advisory Committee meetings, which I think our next one is scheduled later in April, so I'll have an update for you in late April. From a state capital project, I know Councilwoman Weaver, you mentioned looking to outside funding. We have been doing that. We were advised by the Columbus Partnership that we have been, they have recommended us for $100,000 grant for the Price Roadhouse Project, which if awarded would allow us to create an outdoor exploration center that will really link outdoor education with health and wellness programming that's offered by our Parks and Recreation Department. So we are working with our state legislatures at this point, legislators at this point, to advocate for that project as they start that consideration process. And also, speaking of legislators, House Bill 263 that you mentioned, Councilwoman Bowers, that isn't a piece of legislation that was discussed at our recent meeting, was it 263 or 563? Discussed at our recent, 563, sorry, I do that with my numbers sometimes. We discussed it at the Central Ohio Mayors and Managers Association meeting a few weeks ago. Opposition letters have been sent, and we are reaching out to our legislators at the State House. It is a, it is a bill that if approved would really infringe upon home rule authority of local governments, sets a very dangerous precedent, and the issue itself at hand is problematic for us. So we will be reaching out certainly to our representatives and our senators to discuss that issue. I know Dana McDaniel, the City Manager at the City of Dublin, has written and penned a beautiful letter of opposition on behalf of the City of Dublin residents and city council members as well, and comma, I believe was working on a letter as well. So more to come on that, we'll be keeping an eye on that. This week is Severe Weather Awareness Week, at this time of year especially. We always have fluctuations in weather in Central Ohio, but this week, certainly this time of year, when we go from 20 degrees to 50 degrees, it can create some outbreaks of severe weather. There is a statewide tornado drill this Wednesday at 9:50 a.m., so when it goes off, please do not panic. But just for all of our residents' sake, be aware that that drill is happening this Wednesday morning at 9:50 a.m. And just to always, please remember to stay weather alert. Things can change very quickly here in Central Ohio, and it's important that everybody stays safe. Finally, not finally, almost finally, State of the Cities this Thursday. 5:30 to 6:30 would be the networking community gathering, and then the program starts at 6:30. It is a free event, but we are asking folks to register to that just for a headcount purpose, so we can make sure we have enough chairs, et cetera. Council members, please let us know for sure if you'll be attending as well, because we'll save some reserved seats for you. And finally, circling back to the trees in the median, didn't want to think, I forgot about that. They did indeed remove some dead trees there. And the thought was, our horticulturist was, that was one of his projects for this year. He was going to work on the median, not only at Hamilton and 270, but also at the median, at the gateway coming in on the west side. So some dead trees were pulled out of there with designs to be made for repurposing and revitalizing those medians. Now that we are looking for a horticulturist, that project will be on hold for just a tad till we get someone else on board, but that remains a project for 2022 moving forward. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that at the edge? That's at the edge?
It's at the peak at Edison.
Peak at Edison?
Yes.
Okay.
Right next to Edison Brewing, up on, right across from the ADB Safe Gate project that is underway, the corner of Science and Tech Center.
Okay, thank you. The peak.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney.
To P or not to P? No, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Weaver, you've got me started. The only thing I'd like to report is, we did have a lawsuit filed against us in a past week. It was an accident that occurred at the pool. Judging by the way the complaint is written, they do not understand what happened, and I believe that this should be handled rather expeditiously once the true facts come out. A young lady had stepped on a drainpipe that had a cover on it, and she pushed the cover down and hurt her leg. It is a significant injury. I can understand their concern, but it was not our fault. So just wanted you to be aware that that has been filed.
Okay. Thank you. Item L, Council Comment. Ms. Angelou.
Thank you. Yes, first of all, I want to thank Mayor Jadwin for being part of my, the video that I didn't expect. But thank you so much. It was lovely, the wonderful things that you said, and I hope that they're all true.
It was an honor. It was my pleasure.
It's kind of, you know, hard to understand when all, this is something that's so unexpected, but thank you so much for being a part of it. I appreciate it so much.
My pleasure.
I did go to Peace Lutheran Church, my church, as a matter of fact, on March 20th, to the Songs of Hope and Resilience. And for those of you that were able to attend that, it was wonderful. And it's, it's like, with every little poem and every little reflection, and the people reading the things that had happened to them during the COVID, and it was, it was so amazing that I think they should do it again, because, and the choir was so terrific, and the orchestra coming with, the schools coming with all the, what did he say? Kevin said it was, some of the youngest person was 16 and the oldest was 80. So we had just a great, a great turnout for the one I was at, and I was, the first one was probably had, had even more. Although we were, some of us were watching the Buckeyes, which now we can have a cry because there is no Buckeyes left in the basketball thing. So we'll have to move on to other bigger, better things. That's all I have. This was wonderful. If anybody has a chance, I'm sure it might be on, on something. I think they were taping it. Yeah, it was, it was really wonderful. So I'd like to start, say one other thing, talking about theater. Life is like a box of chocolates. You never know what you're going to get. And then I can be Sally Field when she got her things. You really do love me.
Thank you.
I had to do that for you, just for you.
Ms. McGregor.
We were talking about infrastructure with MORPC, and I, when I was a representative a long time ago, I remember one time they had a, they dole out the money for certain projects, but they don't always have the engineering ready by the time the funds are available. So then they have to pass it on to somebody else. And I remember them saying, call Gehanna, they always have extra projects ready on the shelf. And at that time, Carl Weatherholt was the city attorney, so he always had extra projects, he was ahead of the timeframe that he needed the plans, and we got a lot of projects done, not, I wouldn't say a lot, but several done, ahead of schedule, because we had plans already ready to go when another project didn't have their engineering ready in the timeframe that they needed to be done. So that's something to consider when the money will be coming forward. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Fast, that is.
Yep.
Mr. Weaver.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Also had the privilege of attending the performance yesterday of Songs of Hope and Resilience, thanks to the Gehanna Community Chorus and the GLHS Chamber Orchestra led by Kate Kremine and Kevin Dingell, respectively. I believe in terms of future performances, June 4th and June 5th is their spring collaboration. And one thing Mr. Dingell said after the performance stood out to me, he, this was their first time really collaborating together, but even as students, they've been practicing at home by themselves for the past two years, in large part. And there was quite the steep learning curve, again, of how to play as an ensemble, and it really was just a beautiful message that, you know, there has been something lost by us all not being together again, and I think that's what makes this feel so good, being back together and being able to do these things again. And so, learning to close that gap, I should say, and there was beauty in closing that gap. I would like to thank my colleagues for passing the resolution recognizing March as theater in our schools month. My, as I indicated, I've seen firsthand with, with my wife and her work as the theater director at Pickerington Central High School. They just wrapped up their spring musical, and I am very much so looking forward to having my wife at home again. But I've seen the, seen the benefits of what, now that my wife's been teaching, I think this is her eighth year, seeing some of her students, what they've gone on to do, whether it, whether it be theater or, or performance in one way or another, or she's got several students who've gone on to ROTC in the military, or careers in all different sectors. And lastly, I would like to, I know we've probably mentioned it in committee, and I would like to welcome our new Clerk Jeremy Van Meter officially to the City of Gehanna during Council Comment. Look forward to working with you. Welcome. And that's it for me, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Padova.
Thank you. So today I was informed that Taylor Springs Health Campus is having a book signing next Wednesday, March 30th, from 3:00 to 4:30. It is something that they do to help their residents live out their dreams. And Dennis Roder wanted to be a published author before, on his bucket list. So he wrote a book that is about 50 pages, I believe, about losing his wife in life after losing your wife. They're having a book signing with drinks and snacks provided next Wednesday, again, Wednesday, March 30th, from 3:00 to 4:30 at Taylor Springs Health Campus, 748 Taylor Road. And he will be there reading part of it, and they will have books there that he will sign for you. And I love how our community shows up for one another, so I would encourage anyone who has the few minutes to stop by and congratulate him to do so, because the woman that I met today said he was just so excited and nervous that maybe nobody might not show up, and so I would just love to see tons of people show up for Dennis. So that's all for me.
Thank you. Ms. Snitzer.
Welcome, Mr. President. Thank you.
Ms. Bowers.
Yes. I'll start just with seconding the comments about the Songs of Hope and Resilience. My family went yesterday, and it was a wonderful experience. My son is five now, so he kind of has, has grown up in a COVID life, and now that things are opening back up, we can kind of introduce him to certain things like live performance. And the, the way he was enraptured, particularly when the choir was singing, was just the best part of my weekend, and my weekend was really great, so that's saying a lot. But seeing his, he was fixated, his face light up, and he'd give me a big thumbs up and was the first one to start clapping. It was, it was just a joy. So thank you to the Gehanna Community Chorus and Gehanna Lincoln High School Chamber Orchestra musicians and directors for providing that, and to Peace Lutheran for the beautiful venue. I know Peace Lutheran is an important part of our community, and I was glad to be a guest in their space. Thank you to Mr. Weaver for spearheading the Theater in Our Schools resolution, highlighting important and unique aspects of our community as an advantage to this job, and I'm glad to see people here celebrating that, and celebrating that with us here in council chambers. Briefly, I attended the Columbus Metropolitan Club Luncheon on March the 9th. It was organizational leaders in diversity, equity, and inclusion. There were several executives, both from the private and public sector, or I should say, private and nonprofit sector, who spoke about what it means to, to business, really, to have an inclusive and diverse environment. Anthony Wilson, Dr. Anthony Wilson is the Chief DEI Officer for Columbus Metropolitan Library and a former Deputy Chief up in Westerville, Westerville Police Department. And I appreciated what he said, all top level executives need to champion, but associates need to be included and have buy-in into whatever work that the community or the organization does with regard to that. It was just, it was overall, it was a really informative program and incredibly well-attended. So it was, it was nice to make connections at that and see a roomful of people having lunch again, which was, which was great to kind of get back to normal. I also attended, along with, you were at the CVB Annual Luncheon, right? Councilwoman Padova, and Councilwoman Angelou, and the mayor at the annual CVB Luncheon on March the 11th. Mayor Jadwin was recognized with a lovely award for her lifetime of work with the CVB. And then we heard more in-depth about what has gone on in Belle Fountain and how that, how that embrace your weird came together. So that was a really lovely event. And then the MORPC, I'll just second what all has been said about the State of the Region address. Finally, I just want to touch on that the final Make Gehanna Yours Winter Farmers Market will be at the Gehanna Sanctuary on April 20th from 4:00 to 7:00. Thank you to Make Gehanna Yours, I see Teresa here in the audience, and Donna, and Becky, and Kate, and everyone else involved in that. I know that the summer, we're excited for the summer market to be back. Make Gehanna Yours is also looking for sponsors for Adopt a Planter. You and your family or business can support direct beautification efforts spearheaded by Make Gehanna Yours with a plaque and a planter all year. So if you are interested in participating in that, please check out the Make Gehanna Yours website. I think that's all I have for this evening, and welcome, Jeremy. We're so glad you're here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I really don't have anything prepared to talk about, except for one thing, I just wanted to say again, welcome to Jeremy. Did you survive your first meeting?
Yes, except for that hiccup there with Ms.
Yes, except for that hiccup there with Mr. Schnitzer. I think we did okay.
[laughing]
Thank you.
Well, welcome again, and nice job.
You only get one.
All right. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
It's on move.
Good night.